... presentation by Stafford High School Navy JROTC.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank tonight's color guard cadets Brown, Trembley, Gallagher, and Osborne. The instructors of their JRTC program at Stafford High School are Lieutenant Commander Felix Martinez and Senior Chief Skye Shaw. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with an amendment.
Okay, could you move the amendment, please?
I would like to amend the agenda to add item 8.01 for action that the school board adopt, the major CIP project list priorities as discussed in the previous work session.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Hazard, a second by Ms. Decatur. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to citizen comments. And my screen is dead. All right, can you pull yourself? Why don't you read it for me? Mr. McCosker is going to read this because my screen just went blank.
Okay, citizen comments. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allowed to speakers. Chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comments received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comments which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools Policy 1013, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. No one has signed up for citizen comments. If anyone would like to address the board, please come forward at this time. And when you finish your comments, there's a sign up sheet that you can put your name and address. Also, when you come to address the board, please give us your name and address. See no one? All right, going once, twice, three times, close the public comment period, and bring it to board member reports and comments. Do we have a student disciplinary committee report, Mr. McCosker?
Yes, we do. Yes.
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. On March 15th, 2018, the committee of the school board met to consider two student disciplinary matters. The committee suspended Student A for the remainder of the current school year and permitted the student to attend the Regional Alternative Education Program. Expelled Student B and permitted the student to attend the Regional Alt Ed Program. Suspended Student C for the remainder of the current school year and permitted the student to attend the Regional Alt Ed Program. Continued the matter for Student D for up to 45 days and did not permit Student E to participate in graduation.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. That brings us to board member comments. Are there any committee reports? Ms. Hazard?
I'll just make a quick comment. There will be, we'll be presenting at the next meeting because we had our meeting Thursday before spring break and we have a report from the Governance Committee. But it is on me that I enjoyed my vacation and did not get the write up done.
That's fine. We'll have it on our agenda next meeting as well. Any others? All right, then we'll start with the board member comments. Ms. Egan?
I don't have anything to report. I'm going to go on voice rest because of this terrible cold that I have.
You have my sympathy.
I think it's the same one you had last time.
Oh, no. Dr. Chase?
Yeah. Just wanted to say that I attended science class at Rocky Run Elementary with Dr. Benson and Ms. Young before spring break, and it was really fun helping students measure how far they could get their catapults to go. And then...
We had to win.
Yeah. And then today I attended the Virginia School Board Association Superintendent Evaluation Workshop. I signed up before I knew that we were losing our superintendent, but it was still very useful in helping to think about hiring the next superintendent. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. McCosker?
Keep up the good work. Thanks.
Ms. Young?
I attended the Technology Advisory Committee on March the 19th. I didn't report on it as yet, but I wanted to let everyone know that there was staff there, there are students that participate in the Virginia Star Program. This program provides working computers to community members in need through donations and restoration of older computers to working state. And these students, the one student that I talked to, he was amazing. He is graduating, but he also trained new students to do the same thing that he's doing. So it's a good program. So they repair these computers and we just need to support them a lot. Yeah, Dr. Chase and I, we did have a CTE program, so that went really well yesterday. And the other comment I wanted to see if we could talk about later on or put it on the agenda sometime is still school safety. I know school security is measured sometimes of how many resource officers you have, but I keep stating the fact that we need to get to the bottom of the issue, which is gun violence. And we need to see if we could work on a program that measures, you know, how much these kids that come in with some violence are threatening the rest of the school. So I think we need to think about, to make the public a little bit more safer, we need to balance the security with prevention efforts. So we need to think about how to assess and respond for student threats. So we need to, you know, think about that and see if we can measure it and see, you know, where we are on the pendulum to see if we have some measures that we need to look at and see how we're doing in Stafford County. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Decatur?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Hazard?
Just a short comment from me tonight. I hope everybody came back refreshed from spring break. We have, you know, the sprint to the end of the year. So even though it's a sprint, I just want to say, remember, life is precious and take your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. I just wanted to let the board know you should be getting an invitation to the Stafford Education Foundation Recognition Reception at Mountain View High School on Thursday, April 26th. It is for recipients of the Innovative Teaching Grants and also for scholarship recipients. The Stafford Education Foundation is awarding a scholarship to a student in each of our five high schools who intends to go into teaching. And there's still time, if there's any, you know, students interested, to apply. The applications are due by Friday, and our guidance counselors have the information on how to submit them. And these are very generous scholarships. Dr. Benson, are they $2,000? $2,000 each for, you know, five students who are planning on going into teaching? So if, you know, certainly anybody interested, please, I encourage you to apply for that. And then, and that reception is going to be where they actually award the scholarships. So, and it's going to be catered by our Culinary Arts at Mountain View. Please, if you can come, please come because it'll be a chance to talk to the teachers who are receiving the grants as well, you know, for their classrooms. Dr. Benson?
Madam Chair, I have no comments this evening.
All right. Well, that brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to our add-on action items, Ms. Hall. Is that on there? I refreshed and it didn't show. Okay, well, I'm going to, I'm going to base it on my notes. Or Ms. Hazard, maybe you could read us this title for the action items. I have the school board adopt a major CIP list.
Give me just, give me just a second. I have to pull up where I wrote it. I'm sorry. Give me a second.
She's just going to read the agenda item because it's not on there. We're going, we're moving too fast, but that's good.
To add item 8.01 for action that the school board approved, the major CIP project list priorities as discussed in the prior work session.
Okay. So do we have a, do we have a motion for discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
Motion for discussion.
Yes, okay. Yes, well, technically if it's on action, we need a motion for discussion.
Jolly gun.
All right. Let's have the motion for discussion.
Oh, a motion, motion for discussion.
Well, no, it's, it's on, do we have a list, though? The, the action item is to, to adopt a list. So it's already on the agenda, so now we're going to talk about a list. So we need a list for discussion purposes.
Jamie has the list.
Okay. I understand. Sorry, I thought we were going to discuss the list. That was a very long...
You guys did a great job.
Yes.
I, I motion we discuss the major CIP project list priorities.
Second.
As, and you want them, you want me to list?
Yes, yeah, I'd like you to list something for us.
As we discussed in our work session, by order of priority, which would be number one, purchase, renovate Fredericksburg Christian School. Number two, renovate Ferry Farm Elementary School. Number three, build high school. Number six, number four, rebuild Hartwood Elementary School. And thereafter would be number five, Elementary School Number 18, in that order of priority.
Okay. All right. Now, now we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Or did, did Ms. Egan?
I think Ms. Egan already said it.
She's seconded it a couple of times, but now that she's finished with the list, we'll get an official second.
Okay, second.
All right.
Second for discussion.
Second by Ms. Egan, all right, for discussion. All right, so let's start with discussion. And to keep things orderly, why don't we go up and down the line? I don't know if you want to be first or last. We'll give you a choice.
I, as I stated earlier, and as I stated two weeks ago when we were here, that I will not be supporting this. Anything that doesn't specifically address, address capacity that we are going to be faced with in several years from now, that was issue number one. Issue number two was, was the process. The process, the process completely fell apart. We shouldn't, we should not have had an hour's worth of this conversation. That conversation should have happened in the committee, the way it was supposed to be set up. It failed, and that's not what I signed up for. So I will not be supporting this. While I do support some of the projects on this list, I don't, I don't support all of them. But my primary reason for not supporting this was because of the way that the process had just fallen apart.
Dr. Chase?
Actually, I have no discussion.
Okay. Mr. McCosker?
No, and I appreciate the board. We had a lengthy discussion earlier about Ms. Bomke's email in our work session listing, and we answered some questions as a board. And hopefully, we're going to get that back to her as soon as we can. But I do appreciate the board's support for, and the importance of such an old school like Ferry Farm actually putting it back into the mix. Because remember, before this process, that was, I did not sign up for the process, but the process last year actually ripped Ferry Farm out of this 20-year spot that it was sitting in, a 1957 school, the oldest elementary school in the division. I've had these conversations at length already with you all, so you know that. But I do appreciate you making sure that parity for our taxpayers and our kids that are, have been here for so long, supporting this county, and that's the children and the parents of Ferry Farm Elementary School, that they indeed get their time to have a wonderful renovated school. And they have the educational opportunity that so many other kids that just get here, because that's kind of what we're talking about is, oh, we got another 800 kids showing up in Embry Mill, buy them a new school. Ferry Farm, sorry. I know you guys have lived here for 100 years, but we just can't afford it. That is not the way we do business here. And I am so happy that the board is supporting, putting a renovate Ferry Farm and sending that over to the supervisors. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. I, I believe that the list shows to the board of supervisors what we need for our county. We need more schools, and we need the students to have a healthy environment. A new school is good for a school that's been, I believe, over 50 years old. But in addition, I wanted to make sure that Melchers was on there. Should Melchers be on this list? Just, it should be, I didn't hear Melchers. It should be on the list so that the Melcher community, the students that are going to Melchers also have a new environment that's clean with a nice parking lot so that all students have equal area to have a good education. So should we be adding that on the list, or?
Well, let's go down the line and then we can talk about the question.
All right. Sure.
Did you have any other thing else?
No, no, I'm good.
Ms. Decatur?
Thank you.
So I am, I'm okay with this list as far as our priorities are concerned. I believe that Ferry Farm should be a priority because you're right, loud and clear, it's been on there for 20 years. There's, there's no reason why it shouldn't be. Putting it up on the list and putting Elementary School 18 as our, as our fifth priority gives me grave concern for what's going to happen to our enrollment in our elementary schools. So I think that this just gives us reason to advocate that much more, paint the picture, show them our numbers, and let them really know that although these are our priorities right now, and, and they are, they're, I mean, they're great priorities, it doesn't negate the fact that Elementary School 18 sits at number five, and we're going to need it by 20, 20?
Seven.
Seven, yeah. So I, I appreciate, so I'll let Holly talk about Hartwood, but, but yeah, I do support it in this order being that Hartwood, the purchase of Fredericksburg Christian hopefully gives us some extra capacity as well as the rebuild of Hartwood. So that, that sits a little better with me as far as the capacity for elementary school, which is why I can support this at this point. Keeping in mind that this CIP is a fluid document and this process, I'll do my, dagged honest to make sure that this process does not break down like it did in our first year because, because you're right. Irene, that was, that really set us back.
Ms. Hazard?
I think it's important, most of you know, based on the last meeting, that I pushed that we needed a priority list to take over there. I do not want to go back, at least at this point, and say that we are going to have our own CIP and then we send it across the street. That's why I feel very strongly that this is a priority list and not our own CIP because I know that we were requested to send over our own CIP by Ms. Bomke, but I don't believe that's in the spirit of what we signed on to, is we would be working together. In that vein, I think one of the most important things, as I stated in our work session, is making sure that we show what dates we need these schools. And the dates that we need these schools within the 10-year window, we need them within that 10-year window. And we need to be upfront with that because what happens, as Mr. McCosker and I can both attest to with older schools, all of a sudden, things slide. And the way they can slide is if we don't, if we, as the school board, don't go in and advocate and say, well, that's great, but if we don't have it by 2025, we will be 500 kids over in these schools. So I believe that is the advocacy role that we, as the school board, need to make sure we really understand. I will probably be supporting this, although, as Mr. McCosker knows, I am concerned about capacity. I think Fred, without Fredericksburg Christian, I am very concerned about the whole list. But if Fredericksburg Christian is part of it, I believe we need to be getting our growth in the north and the south. And I do believe that Ferry Farm needs to be a rebuild so we get additional capacity. I, I just believe that because that combined with Hartwood gets us the new elementary school in the south by renovating two schools or rebuilding two schools that maybe past their prime. So I, I have to say, I'm still not convinced that a renovation. I also do not understand how a renovation for Ferry Farm with the students in there, whether that is in the long-term best interest of our students, because does that actually make the renovation last three or four years because it's an occupied renovation? That's just some questions I have. However, for purposes of saying what our priorities are, I am willing to support this. But, Mr. McCosker, I always try and be honest. I just feel like that is some, I do have some questions there, and I want to understand the costing and how that impacts it on your community, to be honest. Because I know for me in Hartwood, I don't want to renov, I, I want a brand-new school on a new piece of property because I think that's the less disruptive. But I do think we have to put our dates in here of when we need them.
Do you have some suggested dates, Ms. Hazard?
Okay, the dates that were discussed, oh, I'm sorry. May I add, I agree with Ms. Young about Melchers. I am so sorry, I'm looking at Ms. Kathy, Mrs. Massey. I'm like, I spend all my time in Head Start Policy Council. We need to, if we are talking parity and other things, part of our excitement on Fredericksburg Christian is making sure that our, some of our most needy students are not on a bus for two hours, but I also want them to be on a bus for an hour or less and go to a great facility because they have amazing teachers. And facilities aren't everything, but they certainly enhance, and I will certainly speak to the parking lot at a minimum. But also, there are some things that we should be doing because we can maybe expand some more classrooms down there. So I do believe we should put in some money, whether it's 3 million, I don't know, but I do believe we need to do that.
Okay, well, is there any objection to adding Melchers renovation to Fredericksburg Christian School? It would be a, you know, both, you know, not, not one or the other, but a acquisition of Fredericksburg Christian and simultaneous renovation of Melchers for, in terms of the priorities, not pick one?
Do we have a, do we have a dollar amount?
3.6?
Option, it's option, it's option with, with FCS Scenario 5B.
So instead of 10 million for FCS alone, it'll be 13-point-something million?
14.
Well, this is something that Mrs. Bomke indicated an interest in. Because, I mean, her, I think her interest was parity. Because we're talking about moving, you know, the northern Head Start kids up to Fredericksburg Christian if we acquire it. And I think she, she knows that there is a need for renovations. I think she was in, Ms. Hazard's seat is the policy council representative from the board before, so she has firsthand knowledge of the conditions at Melchers. So it's, it's a board choice, but if we, you know, I'd say, I would support both together, but I would not support.
I'm supporting both together, not one or the other.
With out of Christian School.
I, I support both.
Ms. Decatur?
I would just like to add that I think part of our conversation or discussion in our work session about leaving it off, and I wholeheartedly, 100% support that, is that when we take it next door, I, I feel like it's going to be, oh, it's another thing added to our list, and then we're going to have that many more questions that we've already been bombarded with as far as the need to support this when it was requested of us by the board of supervisors. So I would just, I would really love for us to be able to work together and to give our students this and this, you know, beautiful new complex, but I don't want to be met with, with the fact that we're just adding more and more things to our list. I want, I want it to be understood that this is on there at the request of, of a supervisor.
I, I just want to make sure that we, we put it on there because it's about the students. That's the priority. Not that I don't care what the board of supervisors think, but she did request it, she did mention it, but at the same time, it's about the students, it's about them having the same as the north. And I've been there. We, we've had dinner there, their parents, there's no reason why the place should look like that. And so therefore, I think it should be on there.
Okay, that's assuming we get Fredericksburg.
And if we don't get Fredericksburg, we still need to fix it.
Well, and you may have some disagreement on my part there, but go ahead, Dr. Chase.
Yeah, I also would support including Melchers on there, partly because if we look at what we're proposing, we're proposing in 2019 to have a beautiful new Moncur Elementary School in the north and a beautiful new Fredericksburg Christian School in the north. And as somebody who represents constituents in the south, I think it would be nice if the early childhood special education facilities for children in the southern end of the county looked nice as well.
And, and you know, I agree with you, but I was thinking about the county, Stafford County, not north or south. I'm thinking about all students, equality for all the students. So therefore, that's the reason why I'm looking at that.
Well, I think, I think we're saying the same thing.
Yes.
So how do we want to put it on? How do we want to put it on? Just, oh, does everyone else want to talk about it?
I just want, I just want to make, and I know I sound like Debbie Downer here, and I'm sorry, but I just want to make, make it heard that we, we had a process for developing what priorities were that we were going to send to the joint committee, and Melchers was not on that. So I just want that to be said for the record.
Well, Fredericksburg Christian wasn't on it either, was it?
Right. But that was an extenuating circumstance, and time was of the essence on that one, so.
Okay. Mr. McCosker? Do you have something you wanted to add?
No, just let's, let's add it.
All right, so is there, right, right now, this, this item is under discussion.
Or add it with, or Ms. Decatur, you know, add it with an asterisk.
Once we finish our discussion, we're going to need a motion to approve the list to send to the supervisors. So are we finished with the discussion?
If, if I could just add that whether we are interested in the dates.
Oh, the years. Okay, why don't we put years with these, the years? What, if you could give us the years we discussed, so that when we get to the point where we have a motion to approve, that we'll have the projects with the years.
So.
To send over. And this is to send to the supervisors in response for their request. Well, it's actually in lieu of a CIP because we don't have time to approve a CIP, and we don't have a CIP under the joint process. We have a joint CIP, not a school board CIP and a county CIP.
And we've not had any public hearings on our, what they perceived as our adopted CIP.
Right. So we, we're not, this is not a CIP. This is simply to, to present a school board priority list for these, what, what was the wording for them?
Major capital improvement projects.
Major capital improvement projects.
Is that right, Scott? Major?
Okay. All right.
So FY 2019, we have, on five, in Scenario 5B, we have...
Well, forget about 5B, we're looking at the list. Fredericksburg Christian, and have we, have we agreed to add Melchers, Melchers to that? Fredericksburg Christian and Melchers renovation? Do we have a year for that? Is that FY 19?
Yeah, 19.
And then the renovate now?
So I've got them all written down, if you want me to just go ahead and make a mention.
Okay. Well, just, and you know what? I didn't get a chance. I just have one, one comment for once. I agree with Ms. Hazard with the, with the rebuild of Ferry Farms because I do think it would give us not only additional capacity, but it would be manageable if we rebuild the school on the site. We wouldn't have to deal with relocating all those students. I, I just see that as chaos for years while this school is getting built. So we would end up with a school probably not that much more expensive than the renovate because the age of Ferry Farms and the condition, the renovation costs, as I understand it, are going to be very significant. So I would support sending over a rebuild or renovate of Ferry Farms and then the... So I would support sending over a rebuild or renovate of Ferry Farms, and then the, the committee can decide, you know, what, what is affordable. Mr. McCosker?
And no, so that's, that's new information, but from what the work session, so rebuild or renovation is, is where I was at earlier in the process, right? However, if renovate, if, if, if putting Ferry Farm as a rebuild equates to sitting on the school and not putting a dime into it for what's happened for the last 10, 15 years, then I'm not for it. And, and 30, 30, or, and 2031 was the rebuild date, that, that is just unacceptable. Tonight on our agenda, we have schools that are old, surely, surely not, not as old as Ferry Farm, right? Garrisonville and one more, I can't remember. And we're thinking about putting $3 million into these school, AG, right, $3 million into these schools to make sure that they're, they're kept up nicely in between renovations. That hasn't happened for Ferry Farm for a long time. Remember, the 2007 report, in 2007 said, between 2007 and 2017, we're going to need $10 million worth of upgrades in order just to keep Ferry Farm kind of, and we, we have not gotten those upgrades.
But nobody said we're not going to do anything.
Well.
We're, we're working on a priority list. The question is, what priorities do we want to send over to the Board of Supervisors?
And period.
So I heard renovation.
And so you can send over the priorities, and, and then you're, you're on the, the committee.
I am.
You know, let's, let's talk about it over there and, and see what they have to say.
If we want to leave it at renovate, that's fine, although my personal opinion is that is not practical, it's not reasonable, and it's not going to be cost-effective for the school system.
What the, I don't know, that's not what the teachers want, I'm not sure about the constituents.
Rebuild slash renovate.
Okay. I mean, is that, is there?
Put rebuild.
If it can sense this.
Put renovate slash rebuild.
Give me my two cents adding to Ms. Hazard's.
This is, this is putting, I'm just letting you know that, for me, this is putting another 10 years on Ferry Farm where nothing happened.
No, that's not what's going to happen.
If we say a renovate, well, but we're going to give a year. What year did we put for Ferry Farms?
2023 for a renovate.
20? Well, I think, I think we're going to, as Mr. McCosker points out, if we, if we put a year on, it should be the same year for a renovate or a rebuild. Let them decide what's affordable. But we give them the year that we need this to be redone.
That's what it was supposed to be, right?
Is that acceptable?
Acceptable.
Is that, is that?
Okay. All right, Ms. Decatur.
Which would be?
2023.
September 22 opening?
Fiscal year. I'm going to have a baby before we make this motion.
Like Ms. Decatur.
There are only one person who can make that call.
Another child is going to come to Stafford County Schools.
We can always.
Maybe.
May I?
Yes, please do.
I motion to approve the major CIP project list of priorities as follows. Number one, the purchase and renovation of Fredericksburg Christian School to include the Gary Melchers renovation needed by FY 2019. Second priority is a rebuild or renovation of Ferry Farm Elementary School needed by 2023. Third is the high school number six needed by 2024, I can just see it now. Fourth, rebuild Hartwood Elementary School as needed by 2025. And number, number five is Elementary School number 18 as needed by 2027.
Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Decatur, second by Dr. Chase. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Um, yes, just one comment. I think the other thing going forward from this is how does the three-on-three, and how do we move this forward, this process forward in the future? I believe this prioritization of the Board, if we continue with the joint CIP process next August, if we have to do this again, let's do it. But we need to be communicating to our community our needs within and outside of the process of the CIP, because look at these dates, they are one after another, and we do not want to continue to be in, in that state in the future. And I think this is something that should be part of potentially Dr. Benson and the superintendent's listening tour. I hope that this will be an item that I would prefer, I would like to have added to the listening tour.
Could, could we put this on the agenda for the three-on-three? I mean, that, that's where it started.
Yes. And then the listening tour.
Is that good?
The listening tour, I would ask that Ms. Johnson add that.
You do date.
Next Monday.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's, that's perfect. Okay, yes, and you're right, and we, we, we're going to have to look into it, and the process fell apart. We just have to move on and make our priorities known. This is, this is the time. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Does anybody need that list reread?
No.
Ms. Decatur just gave it all to us, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Decatur.
All right, all in favor of the motion to approve this priority list for submission to the Board of Supervisors, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Madam Chair, motion passes 6 to 1.
All right, now, that brings us to our mammoth information item.
Is it Ms. Massey, isn't that up first?
Yes. Oh, oh, that's right.
Of course.
Ms. Massey.
Ms. Massey, are you up first?
You know what? We're so used to seeing you late in the evening. I'm glad you could join us.
Do you know, somebody moved you up.
You know why?
I know.
Do you know that?
I do, and I thank you very much because I'm actually in Weavensburg at a conference, and so I'm going back there when I finish.
I know, and thank you. And actually, Mrs. Massey came here to train us, so pay attention.
Right.
And why is this not coming? This came up earlier. There we go.
Oh, right there.
Oh, it is the information.
It's the information item, Head Start.
So if you notice, I appreciate very much your support of the Melchers complex. Because if you notice in the goals that are presented to you, that the, the Policy Council approved under quality of facilities, there are several, several major items, including our failing HVAC systems, and then with the parking lot that you all discussed as well. We have an elevator that fails at least once a month that we are working on through keep, keep going, and it's, it's ancient. So we've got lots of issues under facilities that are there. But we have had lots of things done. We've got new roofs on all the buildings at this point, so we're really excited about that part, and some of the other things that we've been able to do. And then we've been able to purchase three buses this year for the school system that will be used by Head Start as well, but we're excited about that. Increase in student success in kindergarten, again, continues to be a goal for us in all of the areas that Head Start addresses, and providing highly qualified staff, providing quality services for students who do not speak English and students with special needs, and then to expand our services as funds become available. And just to let you know, unfortunately, this is not the last time you're going to see me because there is a COLA grant that will be coming before you. Congress has approved a 2.2% COLA for Head Start that has not reached my level yet. We will be getting that information, I imagine, in the next month or so. We've also gotten information that there will be funds available for expanding the school year from 160 days to 180 days. You remember last year, we were able to do some of that, and there's going to be more funding available to add more classes to that list that go the full school year. And then there's going to be funding for early Head Start expansion as well. So we will be bringing those issues to you as funds become available. And then again, to improve the quality of program compliance with our regulations, and part of that is the board training you're getting right now. These are our demographics from last year. And the children who received treatment for health issues in our program, as you can see, asthma and overweight, vision issues continue to be significant at this age. We're getting those children treatment, so they'll be entering kindergarten with good plans in place. Our overweight program for children has seen a lot of success, and we are very excited about the number of children we've been able to reduce their BMIs from, from obese to normal. So we're excited about that. We get a grant from Mary Washington Hospital Foundation for Registered Dieticians to work with their families. And then our social emotional skill development, the DEVERO Early Childhood Assessment looks at self-regulation initiative and attachment, because they know that those three areas are critical for children to be resilient when bad things happen to them in the future. You can see that not only do the red areas of concern go down during our program year, but the children that are typical actually move into the area of green strengths, and especially in the area of initiative and attachment, which attachment is crucial for social skill development and empathy. Our family outcomes, we measure, all of our families write goals with their family service workers, and we work on those all year, and we measure the outcomes with a, with a rubric and scale. And we were able to show again that we've risen in all areas, especially with housing, finances, employment, transportation, and childcare. And then the number of our parents that are involved in the services that we provide for our, for them. And then we had a group of parents go up to walk the halls of Congress this year, and that's their picture there. They were so excited with some other parents from local Head Start programs in Fredericksburg and some others, so King George, Fredericksburg, and Stafford in that picture. They enjoyed that opportunity to tell their story to Congress about how much Head Start has helped them. Again, our scores in PALS stay high. They enter at the, they're supposed to be between the yellow areas to be considered passing. This is where they scored in November, and our teachers get upset about that because they want to score them in September instead of November, because they've already made some progress at that point. But you can see the pink is where they end up the school year. And then the children that go on to kindergarten in the fall, when we measured those students, when you all measured those students in the fall, they, 15% of those had IEPs, 31% were ELL, and 94% of our students passed as opposed to the average for all K students of 85. So we're, we're excited about those. In training for you all, again, Appendix A lists the responsibilities of school board, the responsibilities of Policy Council, and basically, Policy Council approves and submits to you all decisions that, as the board, you all have the final responsibility for. So that list is there for you. There is an impasse procedure in the program governance plan that's in your packet to approve, just for your information. And then we're supposed to give you training on the selection and recruitment for our program, which is called, we call it ERSI, which is Eligibility, Recruitment, Selection, Enrollment, and Attendance. And so there is a selection of criteria that has been picked and approved by Policy Council that comes to you all for approval as well. And what, those factors are derived from our community assessment. So for instance, in our community, we don't have a lot of public transportation, so a family that has no personal vehicle is limited in their ability to make income and to get to services they need. So not having a vehicle gives them points. So these things are picked from the areas in our community that apply to them, that would create at-risk families. And then the income calculation, this side looks at the criteria for Head Start. They have to be 100% at the poverty level, which is listed there, excuse me, which is listed there. VPI can be 130% to 200% of the poverty level. We can also take a higher poverty level for VPI if they have an IEP, but we prefer to use the IEP children for our Head Start program, and if they're over income, count them in this area, because 10% of our program can be over income for Head Start, but we definitely have to have 10% of our program in Head Start with disabilities. So we, we do try and funnel our IEP children toward Head Start category. To be categorically eligible for Head Start, you can also get in as TANF, an SSI family, foster care, or homeless. And for VPI, homeless and having a parent as a school dropout or one of those poverty levels listed. And then this is the documentation we use to prove that income level or those, those We've been working on project-based learning and are working with our children to develop their thinking skills. This is our Teacher of the Year classroom. The students are doing a clothing unit, learning lots of vocabulary, math, and literacy related to clothing, but they worked in pairs to create a pattern for a stuffed animal in that clothing unit, and then they even stitched it themselves with help on a sewing machine. So you can see their pattern turned into their stuffed animal. And again, we want to thank you for your support on our Family Literacy Night with the Board of Supervisors and yourselves. We really, this is our second annual one, and our families were very appreciative of the fact that you took time to come and be there for them. So thank you.
Boy, usually, Dr. Benson gets all those pictures. I'm surprised that we, oh, I didn't even know you were there. Sorry, Bruce.
He was there, he was there, I remember. All right, thank you, Mrs. Massey.
Are there any questions about the grant application? We did include in that two positions that we do not currently have. One of those is a administrative designee, and the other is a early Head Start paraprofessional.
And these are positions that Mrs. Massey is asking the federal government to fund?
Yes.
For Head Start?
Exactly.
So she's the one that gets them to buy us buses and cover the roofs and do all kinds of magic, taking care of things.
If I, you all know my support, and I do thank the Board for coming down and, and being there, but I would like the Board not to be, as Ms. Egan said, Debbie Downer. I hope you noted in that presentation that we are only serving 67%, which means two-thirds of the students who are eligible for services at Head Start. So we are missing a third of those that are eligible. Some of those parents have decided not to send their kids to Head Start for the two-hour bus rides and other reasons. And my real hope is that we do get a north-south Head Start program, pre-K, so that we can meet the needs of those students, so that we don't miss some of the students that we are currently missing. I know the great outreach that Head Start and your family team does, but I can see sitting as a parent saying, "Do I really want to put my three- or four-year-old on a bus for two hours?" I can't really fault them for that, and that is actually outside of our federal mandates, which Mrs. Massey helps, but that comes up every year in our assessment. And so I just wanted to kind of put another plug for why we put as a priority number one, Fredericksburg Christian for the services and things that it can provide across our thing, and maybe we can hit another third of the, the third that we are missing right now.
And just to clarify that 67% is how many slots we are currently serving. We have had a number of families choose not to come to Head Start because of the bus rides, but the 67% is actually how many slots. We have kept all of our slots fully enrolled this year, so we were able to do that. But we do have a number of slots for Virginia Preschool Initiative that are not being utilized as well, that require extra funding to be able to serve those slots. So, because the state only funds a small percentage of the actual cost of that. You all did give us last year, two years ago, a VPI classroom that we added, so we really appreciate that, and that's helped some. But there are, when you see that Virginia preschool application, you will see that there are lots of slots that were not being used right now.
Okay, well, the Head Start application for 2018, 2019 will come back to us for action at the next meeting. Any other questions for Ms. Massey? Ms. Massey, drive safely. Thank you for coming back to, to join us, we appreciate it. All right, that brings us to item 9.02, approve the career and technical education local plan and budget for school year 2018, 2019. Are there any questions about this plan? This, this is an annual plan that comes to the Board. This will, again, will be coming back to us for, for action at the next meeting. Mrs. Hazard, do you have a question?
The only question that I have is the CTEE funds for the programs, they are very broad-based, so in case a particular program does not end up being approved by this Board going forward, we would not have to reduce our grant request. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to 9.03, approve the high school student fees for fiscal year 2019. Any questions about any of these proposed fees? Comes to us every year at this time for approval.
I did have that question.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, I did have that question.
Yeah, I did have that question. I think they were gonna find an answer for me, is that what, you're coming up?
I believe Ms. Young's question.
Remind me the question.
It had to be about the fees for the AP and IB test and how the students who are eligible for a waiver of those fees are informed, how and when they're informed, and particularly are they informed prior to registering for the courses? Because there was some concern that they may not apply for the course because they couldn't afford the test fees. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am, we've communicated with our counselors and asked them all to share that upon students registering for all our AP, IB, and dual enrollment courses. And we keep putting it out there with our AP coordinators when they come back and meet. Usually they meet in each spring to go over the program requirements. And we've asked them to go over it and make sure they make it available, that there is a process for which a waiver can be applied for.
Okay, so they have to meet with them before they apply?
Most schools do usually do, ma'am, yes.
Can we make sure that all schools, okay.
And is, would it be possible to put that information out at back-to-school night? When the parents are there? I know it's early, they've already registered, but just so the families are aware that this is, this is something that, you know, a potential waiver that they're eligible for?
Yeah, we could put that out at back-to-school nights in the fall also.
Thank you.
And I have one other, more of a comment. I know the JROTC fees, we're trying to keep, they are consistent across all five of the hundred dollars, whether or not they are a JROTC program, is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. And then I would just want the board to consider something. I can't remember if this document is usually approved before we approve our FY18, 19 budget. I might be inclined to ask that this item be brought for action when the school board adopts our FY18, 19 budget, since this is about fees and other things. And I think that I don't want to approve something prematurely when we don't really know what our budget is, so that's just something I'd like the board to consider. And I'd just like to agree with Ms. Hazard on that one.
Mr. Nichols, would that present any problem for the high schools if we deferred this action item, you know, beyond our next meeting? Because I have a feeling it's gonna be a couple meetings before we're in a position to actually adopt it.
No, we just tried to take care of this in accordance with what we've done the last several years.
Okay. And I just wanted to make a note with respect to this JROTC fee, you may look at that and say, gee, why do they have to pay a hundred dollars? But the reason they're paying a hundred dollars is because that goes for clothing that they get to keep. They get sweats and, you know, different articles of clothing that, you know, are their personals, you know, after, you know, they leave the program. So I think that a hundred dollars was put as a base sum to recapture part of that, but the cost of that clothing actually exceeds the a hundred dollars, I believe. So that doesn't go to running the program. All right, so that brings us to 9.04, approve the purchase of K-1 Open Court Reading Foundational Skills Kits in the amount of $332,290.80. Any questions about this item? No? All right. 9.05, approve the adoption and purchase of textbooks for mathematics, nine to twelve, family and consumer sciences, six to twelve, technology education, six to twelve, and music, six to twelve. Any questions about this item?
Ms. Hill?
Just a comment, just because sometimes people who are watching, there's sometimes confusion about textbooks and how the funding works. So I'm sorry, Mr. Fulmer, this one's probably gonna be yours. If I read this right, 66% of the funds are provided by the states. That means like 1.6 million of the 2.4 figure is paid for by the state and the rest is local dollars. But the 1.6, I'm rounding, sorry for the accountant, from the state can only be used for textbooks. If we were to say we would not approve this item, that money, that 1.6 would go back to the state, is that correct?
That's correct, and we actually get a little over $2 million in FY18 that is designated for textbooks. And then there's the local share that we have to match, which is the 33%.
Right. I just, I only bring that up just because that's something, sometimes that there's confusion of, well, don't buy textbooks, which is fine, but sometimes, but then we just return the money. So I was just bringing that.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Hazard.
I have a question, and is the local money gets returned also to the budget just of the state money? Not the local? The local, you could use it for something else?
Anything.
Correct.
Okay, or other instructions? Okay.
And I think you'll see here, these textbooks are not purchased that frequently. These cycles are rather wide, six or seven years before we get new textbooks. All right, no other comments, we'll go to 9.06, approve the purchase of 1,166 Chromebooks in the amount of $280,000 in budgeted FY18 funds to cyclically replace 300 MacBooks. Any questions about this item?
I just have a real quick question. What are we doing with the outgoing MacBooks? Just curious.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We resell, we offer up our recycled, our equipment, and we offer it up for bids. We get the best bid. We make sure that that bidder is in compliance with data wiping of the device and that money goes back into our general fund.
The school's general fund?
The district's.
So if that's money that we don't use, are we giving that back over across the street and having to ask for it back again, or how is that working?
So we budget for incoming funds each year, so again, I don't know what the exact amount, but in 18 and 19, we have funds budgeted for the sale of equipment, which includes the laptops and other electronic equipment. So ultimately, it's providing us funding in the current year that we're putting back and there's an offsetting expenditure somewhere, whether it's cyclic replacement, et cetera. But so to answer your question, it rolls up with all of our money at the end of the year that if we have funds left, which like last year, we had a little bit less than 1% of our budget that went back to the county, they put it in our capital reserve fund and we requested use for that.
Do we, if we say we've got all these MacBooks, got this money back, we haven't bought anything new with it, and it ends up going back across the street because we have to give them back anything over, you know, what we didn't spend? Do we notate somewhere that this is indeed where the money came from so that if they're, I guess what my concern is, is that it's not, there has been times when school money has been taken and put to other things in the county. And I'm just concerned about it going, any of this money going to a road as opposed to going to, back into buying more Chromebooks or something like that. Do we, do we notate these things when we have extra money left over from the sale of these recycled tools that we have?
We do not.
Okay.
My question, I'm piggybacking off of your question. Why are we not buying more Chromebooks so that we don't have that ratio where some schools have a large number of Chromebooks because they have PTA and PTOs versus others that don't?
So this being my first year as executive director, there are lots of things that I'm looking at, and I'm definitely looking at parity. And as part of my budget presentation to Dr. Benson, it was to take the inventory that we can now better capture through having a single domain and being able to make sure that we equalize the amount of devices that are out there at schools, whether it be iPads or Chromebooks or desktops or whatever. But that is one of my extreme goals, is to make sure that there's parity. Now, that doesn't, that won't prevent the schools from taking that parity and then using their school funding and getting extra Chromebooks and then making themselves ahead in the arms race for technology. So I can only try my best with the funding that I am budgeted for, and that is one of mine, is to make sure that a school that has a wonderful PTA, that does a great job raising money and has that happen and has those amount of Chromebooks, that I also be able to help a school that doesn't have that PTA participation get them up to that level, that there might still be the PTA that takes them to a different level. But I do have that goal.
I just wanted to finish my thought real quick, I'm sorry. So I guess where I'm going with this whole conversation is, at some point, it would be nice if we were able to take those MacBooks, sell them, get the money back, and put it in like a dedicated fund and allocate the, allocate those dollars to more technology so that we don't have to send it back across the street. I guess that's where I'm coming from, so I hope we can have that conversation.
That's more of a crisp conversation with financing and how those.
Gotcha.
And maybe our fab can discuss that as well.
Good, thank you.
To make sure that it goes where it came from. Okay, yes, Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so, go ahead.
Sorry, so a very quick response. Ultimately, since we budget for those funds coming back to us, if we were to not budget for those funds, we'd have to reduce our budget somewhere, potentially cyclic replacement of Chromebooks, laptops, MacBooks. So we are taking those funds and reinvesting them back into the district.
So I just wondered if, I mean, I've already sort of said, this isn't really replacement, this is actually increasing the number of devices that we have. And so I just wondered if, when you look at the inventory across the entire county, is there any rule that says that because we're talking about cyclic replacement to Anthony Burns and we're gonna buy 120 Chromebooks, that all 120 have to actually go to Anthony Burns?
So at this juncture, for this fiscal year, yes. We're carrying through with what was presented last year and letting that MacBook or a laptop four-to-one replacement happen the way it always has. Now for next year, we're going, we've moved far into the replacement of MacBooks or however, and so we're going to actually be looking at using our budget money and our budget savings from my next item to do that more parity.
But I mean, is there any reason that we can't, as a county, decide that we want to see how many Chromebooks we have and then divide them up between all the schools? There's no magic thing that says we have to put these Chromebooks at this school. We could count all the Chromebooks in the entire county and divide them between all the schools if we wanted to.
I am not 100% positive in terms of because some of the money that, of the Chromebooks they had, already had at their schools came from PTO money.
But the ones that came from the county could theoretically be, I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, Dr. Chase, you're correct. I mean, we could make the decision to move in that direction. I think what we'll see in the next iteration, though, is a look at what those inventories look like across schools and where we might have some issues with lack of parity, and I'm confident that we'll see a proposal that will help to equalize that across.
So I mean, I just looked at Shirley Heim, right, which right now is 11 Chromebooks per one student, and with this purchase will become three Chromebooks per one student. And I compare that to a school that's not getting a cyclical replacement this year that would still be functioning with 11 to one. So it just seems to me that we ought to be considering maybe distributing the resources a little more evenly across the county.
I agree.
Are they tagged separately? Are they tagged separately, like the ones that came from the PTO or PTA versus those?
I'm not 100% sure on that, I'd have to check on it and get back to you whether the tagging was separate and different from that. I do know that all the Chromebooks that we purchased out of our budget are tagged, and now that we have the single domain, it's much easier to track because they have to be registered into our domain. We can track their usage now, we can even very nicely shut them down if they've been, made their way home and they weren't supposed to be making their way home, and the little pop-up says, please return to Stafford Public Schools, so.
And then I had another quick sort of question about this is, I just want to make sure that we're not just buying books because we put it in the budget for that amount, Chromebooks, but that we really have thought about how they're getting used in our schools. And particularly at the elementary school, to what degree do we want students on computers during the day and do we need that many for each school? So at some point, you know, we should actually be looking to make sure that they're being used.
It sounds like we may want to have a work session on this at some point, maybe in the summer.
Absolutely.
Because these are, these are good, you know, questions for future action.
As well as it gives us this full year on the domain to be tracking the logging in and the usage of the device. So from the domain perspective, from reporting purposes, we can see whether they're in Google Drive, in Google Classroom, in the mail, or surfing the web. So it will be very nice to have one year worth of data, or at least a school year of data.
When will you have that data?
Well, end of year.
The end of this year?
Yeah, because Google Domain just, the single Google Domain started the September or for the school year, and it will be very beneficial. I've seen many of my counterparts take their first year and then compare it to their next year when they perhaps have like a full-blown school one-to-one to see the difference in the usage of what the students that are doing.
Thank you. Thank you for the IT strategic plan that you sent. The 2016 to 2018, that's on Dandam?
Correct.
So is it just that piece or is it all through the strategic plan?
So the continuation ends as of this year, and it is my goal, because I am new to this position, to then start something fresh and new along the lines of our strategic mission and vision and align that with that and where we're going with Google and the use of technology with teachers and students. So I'm starting down the line of putting together a team.
Let me know if you need any help.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Brings us to 9.07, approve a purchase, oh, Dr. Benson, did you have something?
Ma'am, Chair, if I just could add to that, the, you know, the device in and of itself doesn't change anything in the classroom, in the hands of either a student or a teacher. It's what we ask our professionals in the buildings and our students to do with those devices. And part of the focus of the Teaching and Learning Summit this year is about task design and how do you increase the level of cognitive demand and what we're asking our young people to do with tasks in the classroom, whether they're using technology or not using technology. So I just, I just wanted to make that connection because that's the really, the most important work. We need to have access to those resources, but then what we ask our young people to do with those resources is what makes all the difference.
Yeah, and if I could elaborate on that real quickly, our first Technology Advisory Committee meeting that we did as a site-based visit was at Stafford Elementary School to see how a computer lab transitioned to a real classroom. And that teacher had written a grant to her principal to do a one-to-one classroom model, not a take-home model. And so I shared with Dr. Chase and Ms. Young some answers to some questions I'll share with the whole board. There's a great little video in there from this teacher at Stafford L., and it's put together by her students, and it's just really invigorating to see, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we've seen you, should I, summer.
The next item's mine.
Well, that's what, 9.07, approve a purchase in the amount of $675,000 for hardware components from Attronica Computers, Inc. to upgrade 6,000 desktop computers in order to migrate to Windows 10 and extend the expected useful life by three years. Questions?
I just had the comment of, way to go.
Thank you. It ends up being like a hundred dollars per computer, so that's a good deal.
Thank you. And all these items will be coming us, coming back for action at the next meeting. 9.08, approve the award of a construction contract to Sorenson Gross Company of Sterling, Virginia, in the amount of $2,910 using VPSA 2018A and 2019A funds for the repair interior finishes project at AG Wright Middle and Garrisonville Elementary Schools. Any questions about this one?
I have one. I don't know if this is something that we want to bring to the fab because of the deficit that is there. There are four projected options to, and I support this project, so that's why. I don't know if the board would want a recommendation from the fab on which way to go, because I know we have done, the fab has addressed that in the past of prioritizing, because I am in favor of this, but right now, I don't know if I could, until, when we get to the next meeting, we're gonna have to address where's the deficit coming from. So I'm just throwing that out, not trying to make work, but before this comes for us in two weeks, I think that's the key question.
As much as I want to support this project, I'm not able to support it at this point without additional information. And I understand from the agenda item that staff is continuing to work with the low bidder to see if we can get this bid reduced. I mean, my concern is that the bid was so much higher than our estimate. I mean, if that's, you know, happened here, it gives me pause to ask. to ask, could this happen in our other projects? So, you know, we need to come to some agreement. And if, if in fact, it's not reduced significantly, I think Ms. Hazard's suggestion that this go to the fab for a recommendation to bring to the board, you know, would, would be timely. Now, the question is, if this is not ready to be awarded at the next meeting, are we still going to be in a position to have this work begun this summer? Would you know that, Dr. Benson?
Mr. Haran?
No.
So, it would have to be awarded. Now, when are we going to know if the bid is reduced further? When will we know that? And that's a date.
Well, certainly, we've been working with the contractor. And as information comes in, we'll share it with the board. But to date, we've been able to work with the contractor to either identify additional subcontractors that gave them better bids or their subcontractors that gave them the original bid have gone back and revised there. So, there's, as pointed out in the agenda item, there's roughly $500,000 in savings from the, the bid opening. And again, we're allowed to negotiate with the contractor because of the low bid and because we are so far apart on our budget. So, we're looking at a deficit of roughly $600,000. Now, there are some options. We can reduce scope within the project. We can go and identify. And if the board would like us to do that, we can certainly do that. Or there's other options. To answer your question, Ms. Healy, I don't believe we're going to, we're still working with the contractor, but I don't believe we're going to see any huge, significant areas of savings left. You know, in my best, in my opinion, we may see another 50 to maybe $80,000 in savings of working with a contractor and trying to get some additional subcontractor bids. So, that's the magnitude of, I think, additional savings. So, if there's desire in the board to go forward with the project, we're, we need to look at different areas also to, if, or, you know, either increase the budget and, and options of finding additional dollars or decrease the scope. Or, you know, dare I say it, if, if the board is not comfortable going forward by the 24th, then we can certainly, as, as draconian, we can cancel the project or we choose to do half of the project, you know, half the school. And then kind of go back and look how we're going to do the other half. Because it is a two-summer project, so we can do one.
This is half the project, is it not? This is, is this the Garrisonville included in this?
This is the entire project.
Oh, so Garrisonville is included in this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It is the entire project, although AG Wright is one that's going to be done first. Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, when does the fab meet? I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask this question. When does the fab meet next?
We're discussing right now, I think, the last email that I sent today was the 26th, 25th, 26th. Because I sent, I know, I know somebody said the 19th, but that's bef, I'm not, the 18th. Yeah, but that was before, the day before our joint CIP and our joint. And, well, we haven't decided on the date yet. So, but it's the end, it's the end of, the only two.
So, it would be after our, our meeting?
It would be after our meeting.
All right.
Right now.
Then I took it off our, our plate.
So, there is a $600,000 more that was budgeted. I'm, I don't, you have to know how it happened. But I am not, I think, I'll put it on hold right now. Because I'm wondering if there are other school needs that are more graver than this at this point.
At this point, at this point, I, I would like to understand more the options that we have, the four that are listed, seeing if there are any additional savings. I'm not, right now, tonight, feeling the need to defer it. I think we do need to, in two weeks, deal with it then. And just what some of your recommendations are. That's where I am.
And so, no, I mean, I, this is a lot of money. I, I think this, for me, of course, and I'm going to put my Ferry Farm hat back on. So, this is the type of work that should have been happening to Ferry Farm over the last 10 years. Now, not anything due to Mr. Haran or us because we went back from rebuild to renovate, to rebuild, to renovate. So, I'm hesitant to say, okay, these schools now need $2.6 million worth of upgrades to bridge the gap between their construction for their children in those schools and then a major renovation. If Ferry Farm decides, hey, we'll get a major renovation in '21, I mean, I think, I think the neediest school would be Ferry Farm right now for that gap to be bridged between a original construction and a major renovation. If the Board of Supervisors decides on a major renovation, wouldn't that be a true statement?
Well, in fact, I would say, not, not, not exactly. I would say Ferry Farm needs to be a comprehensive renovation, a major renovation. And therefore, just like the seven schools that originally identified,
Right.
They were identified for major renovations. The schools we're talking about now are those schools that are roughly 15 to 20 years younger than those schools.
Right.
Okay? And they need this now. Now, we can defer this and we'll be in the same situation that we were 10 years ago with none of these schools getting that interim movement to keep modernization, to get it. So, in my opinion, this is a very well-thought-out plan for us to address different types of schools at different types, at different times in their life. Okay? So, the really old schools are the ones that need a major modernization renovation. These schools, there's probably about 15 of our schools at different times in a group that, that need this level of upgrade or modernization to it. We can choose not to do it and, and continue to move forward with, with us now having this. But we chose to implement this program about five years ago. And we've been able to do two schools to date. This is the third and fourth schools in that. And we're doing it basically on the life, the, the age of the school and its condition. And so, so it's a program that, it's very worthwhile. And I think you don't stop doing something to these group of buildings because of these others. You try to do a little bit in each pot to bring every school, the entire division,
I mean, I, I understand. Of course, I would say, you know, why do we stop at Ferry Farm? But anyway, that's not, we're not going to, I mean, so.
I hear you.
Yeah, I get it, I get it. But that's my, that's my issue.
All right, well, is there any objection to the board with Mr. Haran going back and seeing what we can defer from this project so that we can come in at the original projected budgeted amount? It doesn't, you know, and, and bring that back to the board, taking into consideration if, in fact, the contractor is able to reduce, you know, the bid further? Is there any objection to that coming back to the board? I mean, the board would have to decide at that point whether to go forward. But I think what you're talking about and what Ms. Young is talking about is a, is re-looking at the whole approach to the renovation and repairs of the 31 schools that make up Stafford County Public Schools. And that is something that, you know, perhaps the board should be looking at. But, but, but when, where do we start? You know, it sounds, you know, I don't disagree with you, Mr. McOscar. I mean, I, I hope to see, you know, something on the, on the books for Ferry Farms.
Yeah, FY19 doesn't have anything in the capital improvement, or not much on the capital improvement, if, if anything. FY20 doesn't have anything of concern.
It does.
I mean, it has, it's piled into one, but it, yeah, it's piled into.
It does. We have identified projects that we gleaned out of the facility of settlement for Ferry Farm. And we put them, even though we're double-dipping it with a major capital project, knowing, not knowing which one's going to. So, we are not neglecting any school in the division.
Well, I, I disagree, but, okay, that's fine.
We have a strategy to try to get those.
I disagree.
I'm sorry if you disagree.
So, I just also wanted to ask if you're reworking this or bringing us whatever that you might also bring. If we just do one of the two schools, whichever one is the priority, what that cost would be if, if we have to make that decision? Does that make?
It does. We don't have it broken out that way because we, we didn't. But we can certainly try to get that from our contractor.
Yeah, and these schools, I don't know if you're familiar with Garrisonville and.
Together.
That's right.
AG Wright, they're like Siamese twins. I mean, they're.
So, we didn't cut it down.
Down the corridor, here's the principal one, here's the principal the other, and the nurses are on the other side.
So, we didn't cut it down the middle. So, it's kind of like a jagged jigsaw puzzle as, you know, this is phase one and this is phase two. So, there are parts of AG Wright that will not be done this summer. And there'll be parts of AG Wright to get done the second summer along with, you know, the majority of Garrisonville. So, it's not just a straight split. So, and they do have some shared spaces.
That, that's fine.
So, which one is the next one after that? Do you have it off the top of your head?
I believe, well, I don't want to give you inaccurate information, but I believe it might be in high school.
You know which one?
No, ma'am. It's either Brookpoint or North Stafford, one of the two.
Okay.
But, but they're in there.
Perhaps you can just share that, why don't you share the information about the schools that have been addressed and, and what's in the, you know, what's, what's up and running?
Certainly. It's identified in the CIP infrastructure plan. It's all there that you've approved and you've been privy to. But I'll certainly glean that piece out, these modernizations out and capture that.
But I wasn't sure what the priority is and how it moves.
Could you also provide to us, and this is, of course, after you finish putting together what we spent the hour in the work session working on for next week, but sometime in the, in the next 30 days, put together a list of the projects that are on the works for Ferry Farms that you were just mentioning?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we're, that would be helpful, I think, for all of us to, to see that. Okay? All right, so, so you're going to, you're going to bring back to the board, and, and this will be on for action, but it, you know, will be discussion at the next meeting, yes? Because every one of these items that's here for information is coming to us for action. We can either take action or not take action. But that's the process that it goes through, particularly with respect to this one. Because if this is not approved at the next meeting, it sounds as though the project cannot go forward this summer. Is that correct?
There's several items that are long lead items. And to, in order to get those ordered and get that moving, it has to occur by the 24th.
But what will be coming back to the board will be an agenda item that fits the budgeted funding. And there will be some things that are going to have to be not.
I think you mentioned the gym. Did you say something about?
Correct, there's some work in the gym. So, we'll identify $600,000 in, in scope cuts out of the project. We'll also, if the board chooses, if your board would like, do you want us to identify funding options for above the 600? I mean, including that 600. Because I did, I did tell you, there's some projects in the FY19 and for bond-funded area that could be a candidate to, to utilize those funds. So, if the board chooses not to want staff to do that, we won't.
I have a question too, just, and this might be a question for Mr. Fulmer. Are there carryover funds available to cover the extra cost?
We certainly don't know that until the end of the fiscal year. I think I safely say that, Mr. Fulmer.
Are you referring to FY17 carryforward or FY18?
FY18 savings carryover is what's listed here as a possible funding option.
Right, so, we are working on that currently. And it's a little early in the year. And Scott and I obviously have discussed this, and Dr. Benson. And, you know, we're able to project very roughly right now and think we're probably going to be in less than 1% of our operating budget as potential savings at the end of the year. And that would, like all of our savings, come back to the board for approval on, on how we're going to spend that according to the list that Scott's brought to you before. So, we do expect some, but at the same time, you know, revenues are still uncertain for the rest of the year until, until we get a little bit closer. We're still projecting payroll pretty far out, as I've explained before. We still have three accrual months for teachers that, so, until we get a little bit closer to the end of the year, typically after we run our May 1st payroll, I start to get a lot more comfortable with those numbers. So, we've been updating it each month after the payroll and projecting based on the available budget.
Hold on, you're talking about salary laps and attrition now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah.
So, we're still a little early to invest what the current deficit is. You know, I'd be comfortable with a, a smaller number. But right now, with the deficit where it is, it's a little early.
All right, any other questions? All right, so, so was there consensus on coming back with potential funding options? It doesn't mean we're going to be adopting them.
I say no.
I see, I see, okay.
No, for me.
May I want to see what the options are?
All right, so, you can bring them.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
You as well stay there.
That brings us to 9.09, moving right along. Approve the award of a construction contract to Air Tech Solutions, Inc. of Stafford, Virginia. Ooh, that's a first that I can remember in a long time.
A Stafford company.
Yay. In the amount of $510,000 using insurance claim funds and $112,100 for three bid items using FY18 annual operating savings for the replacement of the roof at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School. Any questions about this item?
That's the hail damage, right, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Hail dam, yeah, that's the hail damage that he explained to us last time.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Healy, I, I do notice, note that there has been a request to move this item to action that as well as 9.10 because they both involve the roofing issues.
Roofing claims.
I do believe that the upgrades of the three that are mentioned, well, three in one and two in the other, to upgrade the roof, since I just had mine done. I'm now a little bit more of a roof expert, not much. But I do not have any issue with moving this one to action should there, should the board be so inclined.
I do have, I do have one question. Scott, so it's 622,000 unbudgeted for FY18. Isn't it covered by insurance claim?
No, no, the base bid, which has basically a replacement of the shingle roof, is covered by the insurance company. The additive items for this particular project, Kate Waller Barrett, are three additive items. The first additive item is upgrading the shingle type, a much more durable, stronger, hail-resistant, you know, type shingle. If, if we had our preference, we wouldn't be putting shingle back on. But right now, we can't afford to put a metal, metal roof on the entire building. So, with this particular situation, we're replacing. But we would certainly highly recommend, and that's why we do, to put a stronger, more durable shingle on there. The second additive item is the multi-purpose room. And we've designed it to go either back with shingles or to add a standing seam metal roof on it. The reason why we did that is because we've been having some difficulty with condensation developing inside those multi-purpose rooms. And it's, it's been promoting some mildew and mold growth in there. If not, Jeff, we're saying, if it's in a perfect situation, that's not going to occur. But sometimes our equipment doesn't operate properly. Sometimes it's not maintained properly, you know, and just, and it breaks down. And we encounter these situations. So, not only is it smart, in our opinion, to go with the standing seam roof, but it addresses this indoor issue.
So, it's 112, Scott?
Yes.
Out of, okay.
With the, with the upgrades.
With the upgrades.
112 out of our money in the rest of the insurance.
Very good.
That was a good explanation, Scott.
Any other questions? Is there any interest in moving this up to, for action? Do we have a motion?
I just wanted to know where the 112,000 is coming from.
Well, that was the next question.
Operational funds or something?
I mean, at 112, I hate to say it, it's not palm dust, but it's, or budget dust, but it's.
So, back to the prior conversation of some, some projected savings. So, we do have funded contingency that's still remaining from, you know, things shifting, savings during the year not amounting to, you know, 1% of our operating budget. Obviously, these are smaller numbers that start to add up. And I report back to you guys quarterly on those. And so, there is some funds left in there. And it's also projecting, I mentioned in the last discussion, that I would feel comfortable with, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. But $600,000 is starting to push it for this early in the year.
And the concern with me with the question was, I wouldn't support it. And I know Scott's doing a great job on that. It's just, it's 600, then it's 100 for this, and then it's 100 for that. And then, all of a sudden, we need to have, because this is the same amount of money that we could use for growth positions. If I'm not mistaken, if we have to hurry up and buy somebody by the end of the year, we, this is the kind of money we can use that for. But if we buy it on one, one, one-time items, use it all up, you know, that 2.6.
The question is whether we want to improve the roofs. I mean, that's the bottom line.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We're getting enough money from the insurance companies to replace the roof. And if we want to make these improvements, which will enhance the, the value of the building and the quality of the air, then it's going to cost us some money. So, I know we saved money from the Hartwood Sewer Project.
That's where I was going to.
So, you know, there, these kinds of monies are a lot easier to locate than 600,000.
Yeah, that, 112, I'm not, I'm not thinking.
It's 182,000 that I, I will, I'm going to say for the record, I am comfortable with that, with roofs. Roofs, to me, are something that we need to do. We can save money as we already have the contractor there doing the contract We can save money as we already have the contractor there doing the contract, or the paid for by insurance funds. To then, in the future, go back and put a new crew up there is going to be much more than this amount. So I feel comfortable, if Mr. Fulmer does, with the 182, if I add 112.
She's talking about both this item and the next item.
Sorry, because it's, to me, the same type of item, that if you feel comfortable that 182,000 is not, I, I am comfortable, and I think the roofing is something that we do need to do.
I just want to ask, like, I know Dr. Chase already asked you where the money came from, but what is left there? How much is left?
It's projected.
So part of this is projected through the end of the year. So we take what our current payroll is and what our available budget is, and we're projecting based on our, most recently, our April 1 payroll, and say, hey, all of our teachers, we know they have X number of salary payments left and benefits, and.
Right.
So we're projecting that forward and saying, hey, we've got X amount left in our available budget for our payroll and benefit lines, and it's going to cost us Y, which is roughly about, let's say, $2 million less than our available budget right now. So we project that we're going to have $2 million in savings in our salary and benefit lines at the end of the year.
At the end of July.
So 2 million minus whatever we're doing for this roof and stuff right now?
180.
182.
Okay. All right. So drip, drip. What are the other things that Mr. Haran is going to come up with?
Well, I, I think if we can have that discussion, not another time. Right now, we've got to deal with the roof, and we have to.
All right, I'm good for.
I'd like to move it to action.
Yeah, I'm good with the roof.
Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Young.
Ms. Young, it's fine, yeah.
All right. All in favor of moving this to action, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Do we have a motion for approval of this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Young, second by Ms. Decatur. Any discussion here? None? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right. That brings us to, I'll call it a twin item. 9.10. Approve the award of a construction contract to Ari Valo Contracting LLC in the amount of $416,600 using insurance claim funds. Additionally, $70,000 for two bid items using FY18 annual operating funds for the replaced roof project at Margaret Brent Elementary School. Any questions about this item?
You know, that's all. I'd like to propose we move it to action.
All right. Motion by Dr. Chase.
Second.
Second by Ms. Egan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve 9.10.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Brings us to 9.11. Approve the award of a professional service contract in the amount of $83,440 using Fleet Services Fund balance to Timmins Group of Staunton, Virginia for Design and Construction Administration Services for the construction of the Northern Fueling Station at Cole Landing Road.
I would also like to move this to action.
Okay, I just want to ask Ms. Egan a question. Did you, was your question adequately answered?
I did. And for those of you who didn't see my question, it was, are all of the other entities who take advantage of this service, the Fleet Services, contributing their share of the pot? And the answer that I got was, yes, everybody's paying their fair share of the county, sheriff's office, and whatnot. Did you ask to have this moved to action?
I'm lucky.
Yeah. Went it down, yes.
Well, we cut back our action items for next one.
That's true.
Next meeting, if you'd like to.
Is anybody opposed to?
I mean, this, this one is fairly non-controversial.
Right.
And thank you for asking your question, Ms. Egan, because I think that, that helps, that this is coming from their fund.
Right, right. All right, well, if nobody's opposed, then I'll, I'll go ahead and suggest that we move this to action.
Second. And I believe Ms. Young had, like, the second, Matt?
I already have asked to move it, so, yeah, that's fine.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now it's moved to action. All right, do we have a motion for approval?
Go ahead. Motion for approvals.
Motion, motion by Ms. Young, second by Ms.
Ms. Egan.
Egan. Thank you. Any discussion?
Second. I would just like, I would just like to note that the main thing about this, too, is the Fleet Services unrestricted fund balance, of course, is being used for this. That shows how we do use, you know, our funds and to reinvest them in the areas that the savings come from.
As long as we're commenting, this is one of the areas that really works well in